All right. All right, good evening. This is the May 5th, 2021 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I do have our, I guess, normal statement to read. So tonight, the city council meeting is in person as the council chambers is set up to ensure adequate and necessary social distancing. Because of the reduced capacity of our council chambers and recognizing some residents will be more comfortable attending the meeting virtually, we continue to provide for public input via Zoom. Please visit our website at cottagegrovemn.gov, hover over the Your Government dropdown menu, then click on Public Meetings, where you will find instructions for additional viewing and participation options for tonight's meeting. We want to be transparent, accessible, and inclusive, and we hope these measures will accommodate everyone who wishes to participate in this open and public meeting. So with that, we will move to number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, clerk, please do the roll.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anyone that wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. Since we are doing it virtually and in the chambers, we do have a sign-up sheet in the chambers, which I have some people which I'll call up first, and then I'll watch to see if we have anybody that's watching us remotely that wants to participate too. All we ask is that when you do go up to the podium up here, you just state your name and address for the record, and please limit your time to three minutes. So we'll start with Laura Wilkinson. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Wilkinson, 9382 Jergen Place, South, here in Cottage Grove. Whenever?
Yep, go right ahead. You start us.
Good evening. Again, my name is Lauren Wilkinson, and I'd like to speak in favor of amending our current ordinances on backyard fowl to allow for the keeping of up to four hens on city lots. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you all for reopening this matter. I know that your time is incredibly valuable and limited, and making decisions for an entire city is incredibly difficult. Cottage Grove already has a fantastic foundation built for the keeping of hens and ducks. Our current ordinance on food storage, dwelling requirements, and waste cleanup are spot-on. We're requesting the elimination of lot size requirements and adjusting property line proximity limitations to reflect those suburban lots. I'd like to first focus on a few of the innumerable benefits that backyard fowl present. Ducks and hens provide outstanding chemical-free bug and weed control, as well as a steady supply of fresh eggs. They love to eat all the things we don't like to see in our yards, like ticks, grubs, beetles, worms, including the newest invasive species of jumping worm. They also eat snacks, like dandelions and clovers, which are frequent visitors to my yard. In turn, they also reduce kitchen waste by eating veggie scraps, potato peels, carrot peels, and other grains, and give us an outstanding source of waste, which composts in only 45 to 60 days to fertilize our yelons. This holistic approach to maintaining our yards against pests and weeds is really important to helping the diminishing population of pollinators as well. Let's go ahead and address some of the concerns we've heard head-on. So first, I'd like to address the fact that some people think that ducks and hens will increase nuisance calls. We've spoken to several municipalities in the area that allow for ducks and hens, and this is simply not the case. So Eagan, Edina, Eden Prairie, Roseville, St. Paul Park have all reported that this is virtually not existent for them. In fact, Roseville and St. Paul Park have reported zero calls for nuisances for chickens and ducks. Eden Prairie reported one in three years, and this, of course, pales in comparison to the number of dog and cat calls that are received every year for nuisance barking and whatnot. The zoning commissioner for Eden Prairie even states that chickens for our city have been a non-issue. So another concern we've heard surrounds noise, which is simply a misunderstanding between the difference of hen versus rooster. We're seeking approval for four hens only, so their conversation levels are about the same as yours and mine, so they don't have that very loud wake-up call, which is, of course, in comparison to a dog's bark, which can be heard for up to two miles. Lastly, I'd like to address disease spread and smell, because the two really go hand in hand, and they're both mitigated by proper coop management and hygiene of washing your hands. We know that chickens and ducks carry Salmonella listeria, E. coli, but so do turtles, bearded dragons, and other caged birds that people keep. Proper handwashing is always super-important in all kinds of care of creatures. Responsible care and ownership of any pet is the key to neighborhood cohabitation, and the extra dozen eggs here and there doesn't hurt. With all that said, I'd like to request that this matter receive a bit of urgency so that we can have well-established flocks that are winter hardy this year. In order to do that, we'd need to get our chicks by the end of June, and this is really important to creating really hardy chickens that are not disease-prone. So, once again, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I know, Holly, you were down here, but you said moral support, right?
Yeah. Any questions about anything that you're having to involve?
Okay. And I did talk to both of you real quick before the meeting here and just mention that there was a request that was already brought up before the council. That staff is working on kind of getting us the data and the information, so being that you came here and shared your information with us, that kind of helps us get it all together and be able to present it back. So you will be getting something back from us, okay? Thank you. Thank you. All right, Wayne Johnson, our county commissioner.
Wayne Johnson, 7862 62nd Street, South Cottage Grove. However, I'm here in commissioner role, so thank you, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to, I was going to be here anyway, so I just thought I'd give an update on, as people may know or may not know, the, there is a site for vaccination up in Stillwater. It's the old Herberger site. Just want to let people know how easy it is to get a vaccine now, that it used to be really hard. You hear stories about had to travel out of state, or north, or south, or whatever. But right now, you want to walk in, you basically can walk in. If you want an appointment tomorrow, you can make an appointment tomorrow. I just checked today, actually setting up my first jab here. So they, they basically had so many spots open, you pretty much every six minutes, basically. So just want to let people know that. It's Moderna right now, so it is limited to adults. However, next week, they're going to start bringing in, the plan is to bring in the Pfizer. And then when they start allowing for the youth, it'll make it easier for the youth and stuff like that. So that's all I had. I just want to let people know that it is easier than ever, and basically, if you want to get it, you can decide that I'm free tomorrow and get it done. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks for sharing that with everybody. All right, that was it for the sign-ups. I don't necessarily see anybody online, if there is somebody, if you want to either raise your hand on the system here or enter into the chat, but I don't see anybody. No open questions? All right, so then I'm going to go, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. There is.
There is? Oh, there we go. All right. Are you got us, are they open so they can speak? Brian?
Mayor Bailey.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, Brian. I'm glad you spoke up there. If you just state your name and address for the record, and you can ask the council.
Yep. My name is Brian Buffy. My address is 7505 Meadowgrass Cove, South.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm here to speak against, I'm going to make that clear, against the rezoning of the, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the lot, around in the Harkness Small Area Study, and I'm not sure if this came before the council yet or not. I was out of town last week when the planning commission was discussing this, but wanted to just speak to the fact that when originally the Harkness Small Area Study was actually adopted by the council here in 2017, and frankly, was completed earlier that year, you know, the zoning commission really took time and listened to the residents around that area, saying that, you know, we're not comfortable with, obviously, high density, going from a low-density zoning to a high-density zoning, where we have, you know, beautiful woods and trees around on this area. And, you know, part of the adoption of that plan included an idea that a certain amount of land would have to be acquired before any of the land would then be rezoned and/or developed in this way. And so the idea there is that we're not going to be pushing out residents by starting, you know, putting apartment buildings on smaller areas of that land. That essentially forces people to choose whether they're going to stay throughout that development, or they're going to, you know, effectively leave and have an effect on their property value that way. So, you know, I know that the zoning commission did have a conversation around this, but I don't think that a proper weight was given to that consideration. And I really think, although we have a need for multifamily housing here in Cottage Grove, I believe that wholeheartedly, I do know that with the addition of, you know, obviously there's a few planned developments in that space where, in areas that would not sacrifice the beauty and the nature that we have in our Cottage Grove, and one of the reasons that we decided to settle here with our family, you know, around, and we're talking on the new developments off of 19, obviously, the new development at the old City Hall location, and some of those other places that could support this. I just, I think we're really doing a disservice to our neighbors in this area by trying to keep people here. We say, we hear a lot of, we want to open up and keep our young people here, and then we build market-rate apartments that, you know, I'm, I would at times think someone coming out of school would have trouble affording. And I'm not looking for changing this idea to, obviously, subsidize housing, but at the end of the day here, when we look at where we can do these things and being smart about it, and, and not, can we do it here, but should we do it here? I'd just like the council to reconsider that and not go forward with that plan.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And I can just share with you, Brian, that that, that discussion about that property and that proposal will be at the next city council meeting. It is not at this evening. It'll be, which is the 16th?
19th.
19th, I'm sorry, 19th. So I didn't want to give you the wrong time. So you're welcome to either jump back in and have a conversation at that particular time or show up, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Bailey.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, council.
You got it. I don't see anybody else out there. That was the only one I wasn't sure of. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the open forum, and we'll move to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, so we have motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember, oh my goodness, Thede, it was like, I'd come in old ways here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we're going into presentations. I think this is the biggest part of our meeting this evening. But our first, our first presentation is the Washington County Southwest Arterial Planning Study, and I believe Kevin Peterson is here, and as you heard earlier, our county commissioner is also here to listen in. So Kevin, welcome. I'm looking forward to hearing about this.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be here in person, so thank you for the invitation tonight. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as stated, my name is Kevin Peterson. Good evening. I'm an engineer and project manager with the Washington County Public Works Department. I'm really glad to be back here tonight in person to give an update on the Southwest Washington County arterial study. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank County Commissioner Johnson for his support and leadership through this study, and of course, his attendance tonight. Here you'll see an overview of my presentation. I'll wrap up with a summary of the recommended alternative this study determined. So in early 2019, Washington County, in partnership with local communities, initiated a study in the southwestern portion of the county. The goal of this effort was to identify an arterial highway connection from the County Road 19 or Innovation Avenue interchange at Highway 61 to the Lower Gray Cloud Island. This area contains existing businesses and several areas ripe for development. Here you will see the public partners that took part in this effort. Special thank you to the City of Cottage Grove for their direction and input throughout. So what is an arterial? Most county highways function as arterials. They connect your local neighborhood streets to highways or freeways. These arterials are defined by higher volumes, truck and freight use, and well-thought-out access spacing. Washington County prioritizes bicycle and pedestrian facilities on our county arterials. A well-designed arterial will attract traffic from your neighborhoods, keeping streets designed for low volumes and low speeds safe. A local example of an arterial would be 70th Street north of here. The Southwest Washington County arterial study was driven by two main umbrella activities: a robust public involvement effort and a detailed technical analysis. Here you will see the effort that the project team went through to receive feedback from the public and local elected officials. Recall that we last reviewed this project with the council in January of 2020. Since that time, very little, from a project standpoint, has changed, but we are happy to have completed the second open house in that time. That open house reinforced the alternatives that we are recommending in this study. In addition to the community engagement shown here, we held several meetings with the current owners of the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course property. We thank Mr. Gustafson for his candid thoughts and partnership through this effort. His input helped drive the ultimate decision. Here you will see the highlights of the technical analysis that this study undertook. This effort showed us, among other things, that the Gray Cloud Dunes SNA site is off limits. The public feedback also reinforced that. The city's length in development was also discussed as it relates to the planning for this arterial. The project team is confident that the recommended arterial is compatible with the city's future plans. So on to the maps. Here you'll see the universe of alternatives that were analyzed with this study. Note that most of these alternatives branch out to other potential segments, leading to a total of 16 different options. After determining these feasible routes, the project team developed a two-tier screening criteria to analyze them, as shown here. The study report provides the detail on how each route ranked on the screening above. Ultimately, we were left with the two most responsible routes to be considered as our recommended alternatives. And here you will see those recommended alternatives. From east to west, note that the proposed route connects to the interchange at County Road 19 and US 61. From there, as it goes west, it turns directly east-west and connects into the 100th Street South corridor. From there, the proposed arterial route is set to curve south. Just north of the Mississippi Dunes property, the project team felt that it was most responsible to remain flexible to allow the city and county to react to future plans. Route F continues through the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course property to a new river crossing. Route N would connect west of the Mississippi Golf Course, Mississippi Dunes Golf Course property, excuse me, and cross very near the existing river bridge. We utilized arrows in these areas to emphasize how any future developers would be a partner in the design of this route. It is important to add that this study has already been an asset, as city and county staff have reviewed the settlers' bluff development on the Sandcamp property and adjacent potential developments in the area. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we thank you for your partnership on this project and time tonight. We look forward to your formal approval of this process and report, and I will stand for any questions.
Fantastic. Fantastic. There we go. What's not going on there? Thank you for the presentation, and by the way, thank you very much for the support of the county on getting this study done. I know it's been something the City of Cottage Grove has been really looking at, both for the industrial park area and another access to the highway for residences over there, but also, as you mentioned, the future plans, or whatever they may be at, for the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course, but also for Gray Cloud Island. My one question, which I thought was pretty amazing, it looks like you, did you, you've had some meetings with 3M, and so have you been able to get a consensus with them based on the design that you shared with us?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, at this point, 3M is supportive of this alternative. We haven't had the detailed discussions about property acquisition, things like that, but based on the alternatives we analyzed, this was their favorite one.
Fantastic. And I mean, it looks like what we've been wanting, if you think about it, from cutting area that could be for commercial and such on the one side, but also making that, that road actually flow, I think, more smoothly. So I think that's, that's fantastic. And then my last question, and I'll see if council has anything, is, so we've got this idea now in this, this, the study, what do you see as the next step? Is this on CIP for the county? Obviously, the city would be that, too. Is there funding sources that we need to go after? What can you share?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, like you said, this is the base building block, the foundation for the future out here. The next steps would be to get it into our CIP. It's not in the five-year capital improvement plan now, but, but as things change out here, we're certainly ready to react and add that when the time is appropriate.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Kevin at this point?
Yeah.
Councilmember Thede?
As I look, as I look in here, it does have the frontage road connection. I don't know if your picture had that, but that's all part of the, the whole deal, right? Are you still, still looking at putting a roundabout then on the, by innovation and 61?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, we have not gotten to that level of detail, so we would do a far more thorough and local traffic analysis to determine that specific intersection type.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. I know it's been a long time for the study to come, so at least we got the building blocks to start a projects.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Next on our agenda for presentations is Building Safety Month proclamation, and I think, Scott, are you putting something up for us? And then we'll be having Councilmember Thede, I believe, read the proclamation.
You ready?
Go ahead. Actually, Dave.
All right.
Is he going to go first?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Dave. Go ahead. Councilmember Thede.
Okay, so this is a proclamation for Building Safety Month. Whereas, the City of Cottage Grove is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our residents and business owners, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas, our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings within our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, including building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry. They work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to our city's prosperity. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, our residents and business owners are asked to consider the commitment to improving building safety and economic investment, both at home and throughout our community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. Passed, to be passed, this Wednesday, the 5th day of May 2021.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for reading that, Councilmember Thede. And just for the public, as I was mentioning maybe a little bit earlier, we have, May is like the month of proclamation. So what we've done is, we're going to just keep moving along with the next one, and I've got different council members that are going to start this process. So Councilmember Olson.
First and foremost, do we need to vote?
We, we do, but I was going to wait.
Are we just going to do it at the end?
I was going to do that as a separate, at the end.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you. So it appears I am now.
Public Works Week.
Ready to read the proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is coming up, May 16th through the 23rd, 2021, and this year's theme is Stronger Together. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Cottage Grove. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents and business owners. And whereas, it is in the public's best interest to learn about and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in the City of Cottage Grove. And whereas, the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Week, passed this Wednesday, the 5th day of May 2021. Myron Bailey, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Olson. We'll keep moving through here. The next one is Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation, and Councilmember Mills will take. Mills will take this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Week is May ninth through the fifteenth, 2021. It's Peace Officers Memorial Day is on May fifteenth, 2021. Whereas, there are more than nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the forty-four dedicated officers of the Cottage Grove Police Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, this year, no police officer's names from Minnesota will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial from 2020. In addition to the national number of two hundred and sixty-four officers who died in 2020, more than half of those deaths were related to COVID-19. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored virtually during the National Police Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Candlelight Vigil in Washington, DC, on the evening of Thursday, May thirteenth, 2021. In-person events will take place from October thirteenth through the seventeenth, 2021. And whereas, May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all the fallen and their families. And whereas, the first recognition of Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day was signed by President John F. Kennedy in nineteen sixty-one. It was resolved in Congress that May fifteenth be designated Police Officers Memorial Day. The week in which it falls is designated as Police Week. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the week of May nine through fifteen, 2021, as National Police Week, and proclaim the singular day of May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Will be passed this fifth day of May, 2021. Myron Bailey, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Mills. We'll move on to E, which is, interestingly enough, Economic Development Week proclamation. Councilmember Dennis.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and this is one that's always near and dear to my heart. Whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism to help establish the new generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in the regions. And whereas, economic developers work in the city of Cottage Grove within the state of Minnesota. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim May ninth through the fifteenth, 2021, as Economic Development Week in the city of Cottage Grove, passed this fifth day of May, 2021. Compliments. Mayor Myron Bailey.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. And I think it was only fitting that one of the pictures that you have up on here is Grove Nutrition, which I believe is literally just celebrating their one-year anniversary. They opened in the midst of COVID, and they're still here, which is amazing to see. So, great job Cottage Grove for supporting a local business. All right. Next is F, which is Teachers Appreciation Week proclamation, and this one is Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, it's a privilege to read this proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May fourth through the eighth, 2021. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, Minnesota teachers and teachers in Cottage Grove strive to ensure the best learning conditions for our students, working long hours and finding creative solutions to difficult problems, so our students can succeed in and out of the classroom. And whereas, teachers have stepped up to support students' intellectual, social, and emotional learning in the midst of the city and state responding to a pandemic. And whereas, teachers work to open students' minds to contemplate new ideas, gain knowledge, and pursue their dreams. And whereas, teachers are working tirelessly to eliminate the opportunity gap and improve education outcomes for all our children. And whereas, teachers fill many roles in our students' lives as mentors, motivators, and listeners, creating lasting bonds with their students, supporting and influencing students long after their school days. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through the eighth, 2021, as Teacher Appreciation Week, passed this Wednesday, the fifth day of May, 2021. Myron Bailey, Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. And then G is Historic Preservation Month proclamation, and that is Councilmember Thede.
Thank you. So this proclamation is to designate May, 2021, as Historic Preservation Month. Whereas, people have been gathering and living in the area known as Cottage Grove, Minnesota, for many years, both before and after recorded history. And whereas, each individual, family, or group of people visiting or living in this community has contributed to the interesting fabric that binds our past and present together. And whereas, the Cottage Grove City Council wishes to recognize the importance of facilitating educational opportunities and preserving knowledge regarding our unique history while also ensuring historical information is accessible and relevant to all residents and visitors. And whereas, the Cottage Grove City Council holds deep gratitude for individuals and organizations gathering, interpreting, and sharing information and stories from our distant and recent past. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, Washington County, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of May, 2021, as Historic Preservation Month, passed, to be passed this Wednesday, the fifth day of May, 2021. Myron Bailey, Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Thede. So now, what I'd like to do before Ben comes up with our next and final one of our presentations, I want to first jump back and obviously get a formal approval by the council regarding the Washington County Southwest Area Planning Study. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then I'll just ask for one motion and a second to approve all the proclamations that we just wrote or read into the record this evening.
I'll make that motion as you just stated.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Councilmember Mills made the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then lastly, on presentations this evening, is the 2021 Historic Preservationist of the Year Award. And Ben Boike is going to share with us the recipient for this year.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. Before presenting the award tonight, I would like to read the following on behalf of the Advisory Committee for Historic Preservation. So the recipient of this award this year is Mr. Herb Japs. Herb's unfortunate passing late last year was a shock to all who knew him, including his colleagues on the ACHP. Herb had a long tenure with the committee, serving as the Planning Commission Liaison from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and three, and a committee member, including many years as chair, from two thousand and three to two thousand and twenty. Herb was heavily involved in recognizing the importance of the community's history and assisting in preserving that history for generations to come. He was a hands-on chairman, always prepared for the meetings and provided insight on most topics. In addition, Herb frequently visited historic sites with other ACHP members, and was instrumental in recommending additional sites for historic preservation. His interest was sincere, and his general curiosity made him a great champion for historic preservation for the community. As such, the ACHP saw it most fitting to honor Herb with the 2021 award. Herb's wife, Janice, was unfortunately unable to attend tonight. She's out of state, I believe, with family. However, Herb's friend and close colleague on the ACHP, Joe Gall, along with the current chair, Herb Reckinger, is also here tonight. But Joe Gall will be accepting the award on Herb and Janice's behalf. So with that, I will read the award, and it's my great pleasure to present this award to Mr. Herb Japs. The plaque states the following. The Cottage Grove City Council and the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation present the 2021 Preservationist of the Year Award to Herb Japs, awarded May fifth, 2021, and states, "In recognition of his many contributions to preserving the history of Cottage Grove, including six years of service as the Planning Commission Liaison to the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation, and seventeen years of service on the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation." So with that, I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Joe Gall.
Fantastic. I guess I'd just like to, and I appreciate the fact that you're taking it on their behalf. The, you know, obviously, I know that many of us on here have many years gone back with Herb, and Herb has been an amazing partner with us in the city, whether it's historic preservation, his passion for it, or even planning commissions, you name it. He was very, very well-respected in our community and really loved Cottage Grove from its unique history and his involvement in making sure that we keep that historic value out there. So it's very fitting that Herb would obviously be the Historic Preservationist of the Year this year. And I know it's also kind of sad, if you think about it, because we have the passing of Herb, and just most recently, we have the passing of Beth Gross. And in both of them, the two of them, it used to be kind of fun to sit in the meetings and watch those two kind of go back and forth about the history of Cottage Grove and sharing a lot of the pictures and things. So, please, if I sit around town or whatever, I'll make sure I give her a thank you for allowing Herb to be a part of the city and the commissions that he's been on, but on behalf of all of us, he was an amazing gentleman, and he will sorely be best. Yes, Councilmember Olson.
Mayor, that was very nicely said, and the passing of Mr. Japs was a shock, no doubt. And I'm sure Mr. Reckinger can agree. You know, we had just had a meeting shortly before we got that news, and we were due to have our next meeting, and suddenly the word came out. I want people watching at home to know what an incredible human being Herb was. The mayor articulated many things that Herb contributed to this community over the years. And one thing that I'll always remember is his passion for young people. He was the initial junior ROTC commander at Woodbury High School. He was the very first one. And he never lost that connection. And as councilmember Dennis and I serve on Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, we've had the opportunity to work with several of the junior ROTC personnel, including Steve Campos, who served at Park High School. And Steve and Herb were fast friends for a very long time. Never a classier man walked the planet. They're just, there can't be any individual out there that met Herb that didn't like Herb. He was just that wonderful of a guy. And he will be sorely missed. He contributed tremendously to this community. Councilmember Thede and I, we served with Herb on a comprehensive planning steering committee. It seemed like whenever there were big rocks to be pushed in this community, and I'm talking big rocks, including this building, Herb was there to help you push, and he was right there with you, shoulder to shoulder. He was a friend, he was a colleague, and just a tremendous mentor to young people in our community, and an example of what a great citizen looks like. This award is perfect this year, and it's just too bad he couldn't be here to accept it himself. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. All right. So that actually ends all of our presentations and awards this evening. And thank you too, again, for coming and participating with us. Next on our agenda this evening is Consent Calendar. Council, is there anything you would like to pull on consent? Councilmember Dennis?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item E.
Item E. Okay.
Pull D.
And councilmember Thede is D. Anything else? All right. I guess we can just kind of go in order. Why don't we just go down, start with D, which is the, ironically, Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation Appointments. Councilmember Thede.
So, talking about the historic preservation this month here, we do have some vacancies on the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. We did receive three applications from residents with varying backgrounds, actually, quite a good mix of individuals that I am recommending the appointment of. The three different individuals are Brian Edwards, who studied history in college. He is a founding board member of the WAG Farms Dog Park and is lieutenant governor of the Minnesota Mayflower Descendants Society, and he wants to bring a fresh perspective to the ACHP. Jacob Grunhauser has researched the history of this area and currently works for the Minnesota House of Representatives. He would like to help better preserve and make known the city's history. And Linda Johnston has lived in Cottage Grove for over fifty years and worked as a realtor here for thirty-five. She's been active in various civic and volunteer groups, including being a member of the first Strawberry Fest Committee. And if she's listening, there's still space on the committee, by the way. Come on back.
I'm in Strawberry Fest.
There you go. Her goal is to promote a sense of pride in the city's past and excitement about its future. So I'd ask that the council and the mayor join with me to support and this request and approve the appointment of the following residents to fill the vacant seats on the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. Those names, again, were Brian Edwards, Jacob Grunhauser, and Linda Johnston, and they'd all be filling a term that would end February twenty-eighth, 2023.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then we'll go to E, which is Planning Commission Appointments. Councilmember Dennis.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And as it's my honor to act as council liaison to the Planning Commission, I'm very pleased to recommend the appointment of Jarrett Wright as our next Planning Commission member. Mr. Wright would be appointed to fill an unexpired term on the Planning Commission that was created with the resignation of Ken Britton in March of this year. This term would run through February twenty-eighth of 2022, and since it represents less than one-half of a full term, it would not count against future term limits as set. Mr. Wright was previously a member of the Planning Commission from November 2018 through May of 2020, after which he was military-deployed in service to our country. And he just got back home here a couple days ago, and already wanted to continue his service here to our city. So it's my recommendation and ask of support that the council appoint him to fill an unexpired term on the Planning Commission, ending February twenty-eighth of 2022.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. So seeing no other items being pulled on consent, we'll look for a motion to approve consent this evening.
Move consent.
We have a motion by councilmember Thede.
Second.
Second by councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you're watching or listening for anything, because there's nobody other than the staff in the audience right now, for anything on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Next on our agenda is eight, which is Approved Disbursement. Eight is Pay the Bills.
Move to Pay the Bills.
We have a motion by councilmember Mills.
Second.
Second by councilmember Olson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is Public Hearings. We have none tonight. Ten is Bid Awards. We have none tonight. A regular agenda, there is nothing for number eleven. Twelve is Council Comments or Requests. So I'll start as normal with councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pass tonight.
All right. There we go. Councilmember Dennis.
All right. Thank you. I might have a couple things to say. First and foremost, since we just proclaimed Economic Development Week, just to give a quick accounting for the community, we're up to one hundred and ninety-nine new houses so far for the year, which is a pretty nice number for us to hit. Economic development-wise, things have slowed a little bit with some of the commercial and retail, but housing continues to be really a successful part here for our community. And then the second thing I wanted to do is to thank my wife for allowing me to be here tonight. It's her birthday, and I wanted to wish her a very happy birthday. And, you know, it's one thing when you like to be with your family, but it's also a special thing here to be with. also a special thing here to be with the, the community family. So I'm here tonight, and I appreciate all her support, and I wish her a happy birthday.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
You got her. Councilmember Bethidi.
I guess I'm gonna like to, to mention one thing, and again, to kind of sound like a broken record, but, you know, Commissioner, County Commissioner Johnson was in and talking about vaccinations and, and, you know, it's just, I've come across some people who said, oh, I don't, I don't need that, or this and that, and, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that's fine if, if somebody doesn't feel they need it, but, but it's really protection for others, too, and it's, it's consideration for others. And, you know, if we really want to get beyond this, this pandemic, we, we just need to all kind of step up and, and, I mean, get the, get the shot, you know, get your, get your vaccination, and, and let's, let's get beyond this pandemic. And, you know, it might be something that turns out to be a little bit like the flu, where you had to get repeat vaccinations, you know, over years and things like that. But just, just go get the shot. And there's so many places, I think even Walmart now, you can walk in and, and within like six minutes or something like that, you can, you can, you know, get the shot or something like that, you know, in a variety of places. So it's, it's certainly, you can't complain about having to wait in line or go lord knows where to, to get your shot and things like that. So, so be a good neighbor, be a good person in society, and go get your shot.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe our city administrator sent us an email last week that said, "May is the month of everything," and she was not wrong. It is also, in the month of May, Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I wanted to acknowledge that, though we did not make a proclamation, that, you know, we, we have a number of community members, a very large population base, in addition to, you know, many folks who work for the city, who are of Asian-American or Pacific Islander or Native Hawaiian descent. They, they are continuing to make up an ever-larger portion of our community as time goes by, as we'll see when we get all of our census data. It's important for, for people to understand that this city council and this city values everybody. We value people of, of all backgrounds and experiences, and we're very blessed in the City of Cottage Grove that we have a very wide and diverse population base. I'm proud that a lot of our Asian-American neighbors have chosen Cottage Grove as their home, and that they continue to do that. And, and we have many who have, you know, opened businesses in town and been very successful in that regard as well. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, even though we don't all look alike, we have an awful lot of things in common. You know, we want good schools for our kids, we want good jobs, we want to live in a safe community, and Cottage Grove is, is a place where you can get all of that. And that alone demonstrates that our commonalities are much more pervasive than the things that some people choose to use as leverage to try to divide us. That is not something that you'll find in, in this community or from this council. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that it is Asian-American Heritage Month, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and make sure to express the, the great amount of value that we place on our neighbors of those backgrounds. I also wanted to take a moment today to acknowledge that my colleague, Councilmember Mills, did a magnificent job reading the proclamation around Police Week, which will be coming up next week, and also talking about Law Enforcement Memorial Day. In the month, or excuse me, in the year of 2021 alone, through yesterday, we've had 119 line-of-duty deaths of law enforcement officers in our country. There aren't a lot of demonstrations when those things happen, there aren't a lot of news articles or, or programs on TV that you will watch that acknowledge that. But the fact of the matter is, there've been 119 line-of-duty deaths this year alone, including one in Minnesota. We had a detention deputy in Olmsted County named Mark Anderson who passed away on the 15th from a heart attack after getting into a scuffle with an inmate. It is really critical that we, as leaders, especially elected officials, acknowledge the value that our law enforcement officers bring to our communities across the country every day. They, they, they need that from us, and they deserve that from us. The very fact of the matter is that every day when they go to work, they don't know what they're going to respond to and whether or not they will be coming home safely at the end of their shift. And that is a risk that they take willingly, and Mayor, you know that better than anybody, because you have a son who serves as a police officer. Councilmember Dennis, you know that better than anybody. You yourself wore the uniform and wore the badge. Police officers represent the best of us in our communities, and that's not to say that all police officers are perfect. All police officers, you know, are, are without failure. Any profession, doctor, attorneys even, retail managers like myself and, and the mayor, business owners, any profession has its share of individuals who struggle to, to operate within the guidelines of the profession and can be seen as, as people who don't hold up the, the best attributes of that specific profession. But the fact of the matter is, the monumental percentage of law enforcement officers who serve our communities do so with distinction, with honor, with integrity, and with bravery. So I want to acknowledge that on Law Enforcement Memorial Day, we need to honor the 119, and I sure hope that number doesn't climb between now and then, who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities and their neighbors. That's what law enforcement officers sign up for, and it's what they do, and they deserve gratitude and respect for that. And that's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Olson. The only other item I was just going to bring up for the, the public and the council is we, we have been, I know our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, and our Cottage Grove Lions Club are working together to make sure that we have a, a safe and successful Fourth of July celebration this year. There will be Fourth of July fireworks, as planned, and I did want to acknowledge that we just, I just received a phone call less than a week ago from the manager of Hy-Vee, who has presented a check for $5,000 to put towards the Fourth of July fireworks, to add to the checks that we actually carried over from last year, from tennis sanitation, a renewal by Anderson, and 3M. So I just want to thank all of them for their support of the fireworks. I think we'll all be, as you were talking about vaccines and such, it'll be nice hopefully by July 4, if everything kind of pans out, if you will, from a, I think they're hoping, what, about 70% vaccination rate across the nation? I think that would be pretty, pretty awesome. And that way, we can start getting back to whatever normal is, as it seems like it is. I was in traffic today that I haven't seen in a long time. So the fact is, I think more and more people are actually getting back to work, and, and things are slowly working back to today's normal. But thank you again to Hy-Vee and those other businesses for supporting Cottage Grove and the Fourth of July fireworks this year. It'll be a nice year to celebrate after a really tough 2020. All right, so next on our agenda is workshop open to the public. There is not, is none this evening. There is a workshop session closed to the public, and this is a city administrator performance evaluation. And I'll just mention it publicly out here before we move into a, a closed meeting. The closed meeting is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot 05 subsection 3A to conduct a performance evaluation of city administrator Jennifer Levitt. And so I'll read that once again, once we get into the room, to make it official, but I just want to make the public aware that that is what we'll be doing in our closed session this evening. So we won't adjourn here, we'll adjourn in the other room. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.